The Constitution of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman and Hackensett here. Alderman and you know?
Here.
Alderman and Brenda of Thompson? Here, Alderman, Kathy, Virginia.
Here.
Considerable of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second.
Motion made, second. All approved.
Aye, aye.
All opposed? Any? Consent agenda. Motion made. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Motion made, second. All approved.
Aye, aye.
And body pose. Motion passed. Alright, fellas, along the way. There's business. New business departmental assignments. Okay. So, do you want to keep it the same or just bend over? Does he got a kind of group?
I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, it's your guys' management.
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
Because you know pretty much the water and stuff. Kathy, I like that, you know, I like y'all Alderman. You've been in enough, but like the newer ones, I think it'd be good to show them around and stuff. Don't you, I mean, so they know.
Field trip.
Field trip?
Field trip.
I don't know, honestly, I don't know, like, it sounds gross, but I'd like to see the water treatment pipe and different things.
Sure.
I don't have a problem.
Yeah, so.
We'll set you up, huh, right? Are you the tour back there?
I think the one where we all go, look at the decisions we've made.
Exactly, so you know how it's like.
I think that's really a...
I think that means, we've done this question.
Means it's like, I guess, we're down to get one, let's see, I know.
Uh, motion to approve departmental assignments, if keep it as it is.
I'm like, motion you can come out there.
Zip it.
I second.
All favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Alright. Number eight, review of right-of-way ordinance is revealed. So, this is where you guys can look through that because I go more depth and want to do that.
Yeah, I didn't see any right-of-way ordinance in the...
Hang on, oh, is it this?
It should be, I got it.
Okay, is it after, if that thing is after this thing? Hang on.
The right-of-way, what, for utilities?
Is it the water support, is it the...
Is it the public order, the...
No, no, hardly three.
No, we got the one for auction agreement and, uh... nuisance evasion officer.
And a point five.
A point five, most.
Okay. Eddie, Phil, Drew, Will. I got it, copy, do you want to make a copy real quick? The pertaining to charter called an app where this was going on. She, you know, we don't have the ordinance, so it became to what Perryville.
And there was an issue with them hitting a water line or something.
And that's a continuation issue, so... So, sorry, I must not with your own, so.
That's fair. And then, but in summary, what's the story?
So, pretty much, they never, even with our business permits or that permits they have, they never got them. In turn, they hit the tower, you know, the six-inch man. And they lost approximately, let's see, right here, total?
Hundred and two thousand.
Hundred and two twenty-seven.
They never got a right-of-way to leave that?
No.
They had a right-of-way to do on sixty-one, you know, motor, but not to go...
Within the city.
We've never, ever had anybody go through the city, it's always been along sixty-one more.
Yeah, I've had two, like, up on the hill by me, I've had someone spraying lines, but it may be dig right or something because they're AT&T flags.
Yeah.
And, but I can't tell if they're digging or...
They're at a stop right now because of the main issue and some other issues. Because they were per se combined with city at all. So, they wanted to refer to charter and I guess section charter is one company now, so.
So, is that turned over to the city attorney?
That's where the ordinance comes in. Because I tried to mediate with them, they stayed, flew one of their board records down here to try to, you know, it is what it is. And I have, right now, it's a stalemate. Because they said, well, Perryville gave us a permit to St. Jen, and I talked to the commissioner when I was up there having a meeting, and references to the grant and stuff. So, they never issued a permit to be inside city limits or to approach or trespass, so at that point. So, I contacted others, like Scott said, you know, and Lee Summitt that had this same issue. And that's where I pieced that together from them because they have, they hit six man, so they...
Six?
Yeah, they got twelve-man man. So, you can imagine the loss they got.
Right.
But they do have a water facility, they produce their own water, but I mean, it's just... So, that, you know, it was just back and forth communications, you know, between subcontractors and then you have regular contractors and then Sunrise Telecommunications works under the umbrella of Charter Communications. So, you know, it's like their permit departments that go here, that, you know, every, they, multi-billion dollar company had a department or something.
Yeah, so, I would imagine we would get settled by a mid-level manager coming in saying, go do this and that unless they have a fixer. And therefore, having to, you know, just going straight to attorney because we have to cover our losses, you know, and... The improvements that created by...
And I go with Frankie and, like, material uses where this came up because they're quits and now they want, like, an itemized and somehow we can just take our meat around and give it to them, it doesn't work like that, you know? Because they don't believe that loss, it shouldn't be that high, but, and so I sent them our waste, or water rate. And I said, and this is the call, and I mean, this is what you asked for, so you can get it. And then they tried to blame it on us, and I said, that's not the case because it was marked and there's, and Frankie knows the markings and everything. And they did take the diameter of the pipe and then their scope of work was never provided to us, another depth, so they lowered that to thirty inches where they struck that man and shattered it.
And they went right beside the man.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, back to that, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, the thing with dig right, you have on your blue line, you know, your telephone line, marks your water, your sewer, you have a two-foot width on either side of that blue mark. But then you have to take the size of your diameter of your pipe with two and that puts it... Whenever I got down here to determine what happened and shut down a main, automatically, my first instinct, pull, take measure out and measure my mark, we was right at two foot on my mark. With the diameter of the pipe, you're looking at, you know, a three-foot radius. Anyway, well, they measured out three foot and they're saying that they was not live before we were live. Because the marks were off, the marks was not off. It was the way it was located and that mark being within that range. So, that's where the argument, and then the other thing I disagreed with them, one was they did not call in to dig right for a strike. They didn't call anything to dig right, I had to call the emergency locate back in because there was already one with me, I could go off there, one from our, if I can't go off, another person is located, anyways, to dig it up. So, the thing, when I got here, I checked the tower and we was at half on the tower. Our tower up here holds, you know, two hundred, three thousand gallons of water and we was half. So, that, with that right there, and I'm probably a little off on that consumption of water, as in, I'm less than what I'm actually, the actual use. Because I had to go back because we had to flush the hydrant and do the air pockets several days. I had to take a back T sample to make sure that the water was potable or, you know, that was drinkable, so, you know, no bacteria, you know, bacteria in it. We had to add bleach, you know, into the pipe to shock it because we had to lose all pressure. And so, that's pretty well, I mean, give or take, or both. Need to give more to, you know, I'm actually less than probably what we actually lost because of the usage of the town, too, so.
Sorry to get in the...
Yeah, so, we used to have a separate file, like, documenting all of our losses, including all the business you guys...
So, we have, we have on file, which April does it at the end of the year, on her part, whenever she's doing all the water meters, whenever she's reading, when we read the meters, she goes into the consumption of what we use and what was lost between the reading that county gives us, you know? And so, we have a water loss, we have water loss, no matter what, fires, fire suppression, you know, leak, you know, stuff like that. We do have a water loss, it, you can't not have a water loss. I mean, if you don't have a water loss inside of the community, basically, what I'm trying to say is, that's very unlikely, you know, because you got fire suppression and stuff, too, because we don't, we can't calculate our water reuse out of trucks or anything like that. That's just like today, you know, using the water like we was. But the thing about it is, is we have to calculate, you know, being our, like, ten to twelve percent, you know, water loss. If it's anything over that, then we have problems, major problems going on, something's not right. But when it comes down to that, that's considered a water loss, a water leaks, a water loss, because it wasn't consumed.
And the water for the fire trucks that comes through out of hydrants, as you can...
It comes out of the hydrant, and the only time we fill up inside our firehouse where it's metered is if we're doing training. But if we're on a fire call and cook to a hydrant to, you know, transport water, we don't meter, you know? We just know what our trucks are putting out and, you know, and how much water they hold, and so... I mean, by the time we hook a meter up, we might, I mean, everything's gonna run.
No, so you'd probably, like, that calculator, because if you know, a tank, you know, truck holds five thousand gallons or something, and you fill it twice, and...
So, it was been back and forth meetings with them and then just, you know, what each pyramid, you know, when you gotta go up and then... You know, right now, is at a stalemate because I shut their work down because of what they caused and then the damage and then they were abusing and fighting dig right, saying they were gonna dig anyway, so after I told them that, I shut them down. Filled them within the jurisdiction of this town because it shouldn't be the residents or us floating this bill from their neighborhood act. And even if they have a permit and everything, or didn't, by state statute, they still were approaching on private property and every property over here can file a claim. So, I don't understand, you know, like he said, it's less really than what it could be, but I haven't got a response. I sent emails and wanted a response for it, and I have not gotten one. But...
So, this ordinance, I mean, we're, this is the first thing we've really presented with, so it's, and each of these, I think we should discuss it as it will, but...
Yeah.
In terms of acting on it, probably need to table it and then pick it up.
That's what I figured, I just wanted to make aware because it was one of the niche things and trying to get the consensus of different cities. Because, like, the commissioners even said they messed up by issuing the permits. And because now they have to observe each section, they do before they can move on to the next.
Right.
So...
And then, in terms of the legalese, the verbiage of these ordinances, who, were we, do we have an attorney drop out, or is it...
We were supposed to have years ago, I talked to Jeremy, and it was a briefie, I mean, and I even ran this with this across from him, but we have to, the ordinance I bring by him. He's our prosecutor.
Prosecuting attorney, but we're gonna make sure we weren't making...
Because we wanna have, most, you know, we need a scope and umbrella to cover for things like this or other things legally wise, so...
I wanted to say that they didn't call one-eight-hundred dig right. So, they're, they did it wrong, I don't know who the legal control authority is, but they should be on top of them and take him to court, and then that should be, it's not a whole other thing for us.
That's what I'm working on now. And so is the board.
We have to get the enforcement mechanism in place.
Once we get that back in the US, Jeremy's full force with it, he reviewed the damages and reviewed the pictures. So, we can talk about that, close, or whatever you want to.
Okay, great.
So, motion to table that, so...
Motion that we table the ordinance on right-of-way.
So, next meeting, and then...
Next, I second.
Motion second, all approved.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Table, tell.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Sorry, a lot, but...
Oh, it's no problem. I looked at this one as well, and the, there's, the wording of it is, "All ordinances and parts of ordinance are subject to your work right here by repeal." And it would be nice, instead of just making a blanket statement like that, it'd be nice to know which one you're actually repealing.
Well, we got, like, five. Yeah, maybe we wanna go back to, like, eighteen, even some of the old ones, like...
Well, we should pull on, and it just, you know, it could give you more background to make your decision, so...
So, then, do we have one, and that states all that for legal resources?
The only thing don't count one part is the actual board, going down the city streets with the board.
Okay.
I mean, we've got, I'm flipping over this, and we've got the ordinance that we already have, has a lot of it. Actually, we need to probably study it and then maybe more that we need to add.
And that's fine, yeah, that's why I put it with you, because, I mean, I got the consensus from every city administrator that had problems, just to kinda, and even have people up front, and just, like, kinda get that bridge. On the ordinance, on what establishes, the consent approval majority of board members that point off to just serve professional services. Number ten, I'm sorry. Thank you, April.
So, are we gonna have several, a, ordinance, or a small?
The...
Number nine?
Number nine. Well, probably all three.
Yeah.
It's up to you because Jeremy can't do any work during work on this, so...
So is done.
Yeah. Well, you should have a bid, like, what is, we said, you know...
Okay, well, if you had, like, the opportunity to hear the pre-existing ones, and then, like, there's a thing about, I mean, to stipulate that, that we need approval to hire people in different positions, it raises some other questions, like, what's the budget? How much can you afford? What's the salary, what, or what benefits? And if you list four or five, you know, posts, that's potentially four or five more employees that we couldn't, I don't think we could afford, based on the budgets and stuff. So, if they're connected somehow together, then that, you know, I think we just need to go over that.
That's fine, I mean, that's just what Jeremy...
Put together, yeah.
Maybe we just need to tie up the verbiage, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so that's, I mean, if you wanna table it, I mean, or would we, a session just as, I don't know if there was a contract prior with Jeremy or not?
Yeah.
As far as...
As being both prosecutor and city attorney?
Just the prosecutor.
Okay. Because, you know, at this point, with where we're at...
He was, my understanding was that he didn't have a formal city attorney, but he was helping with legal issues.
To a point, yeah, oh, he did, to a point, yeah. So, that's why I picked somebody else last night, you know, so... Because this is an as-meeted basis, it's billed not just an hour, it's like, say...
Only if we use him, we'll be billed.
Yeah, that's, that's only time. He's still gonna be prosecutor, do things on the police side and everything, but this is, if we have a legal question or close session, we can chip and text or call them, do a voice conference, and that, and it's based off, like, fifteen or half hours increments. It's not like, you know, and it's half rate, because everybody else pays a lot more, so...
Yeah, that's the first I've seen of that, so. Where's that now?
You have one, you have a second.
Yeah.
Was that in the email, or just...
No, he sent that, he sent that to me this morning and I printed it all.
I think it's still late last night, because he's had another municipality deal with something else, because he does, like, five or six, so... And this is what he does, a lot of smaller one.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, but everyone else is... But the review of the stuff, I think to do due diligence, we need to...
Right, 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 I know that, but I think this we need to get, that way he can work on this.
Okay, so, you wanna make a motion to approve, did you guys see the pay scale for the attorney?
Yes.
So...
I make a motion to approve Jeremy as our city attorney, along with our prosecuting attorney.
Alright, second, motion made, second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any? No? What's with that? Alright, so that's all, that's, we can move on that one. Sorry, it's just, it's just been a night.
No, no, sir.
I didn't know, I thought he was, when I called him, and he's like, uh, no, but I can give you a briefie, you know? Why is a briefie, he, he talks to me. Alright. Alright, now... This is the number ten, number...
Well, we're kind of, just, my head, too.
The option agreement?
No, no, we did it on.
Okay. Did you guys have a chance to read over that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, and it seems like a good idea, but to see it suggests that there's stuff you're thinking of auctioning.
Like, and you've had, if you read, it's, it's personal property that is no longer usable, like, every municipality purple wave, but it gives us more leeway just from sealed bids, but you get lower return versus the person on purple wave pays the auction piece where we don't. This is just a coverage of what most...
But do we have stuff that needs to go, no?
Well, there's plenty, and there's things missing, but, you know? But we, we have a lot of things that, I mean, Frankie can, you know, tell you about, too. Not the good stuff, but there's stuff we don't utilize, that can be offered off, you know? And put back in for something to replace.
There has to be a list of everything where we can actually auction.
Like the inventory.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, often, how often have an auction, or since that auction? I mean, what... We know, I'm just saying, anytime we get rid of anything, but anything, we have to have a list. And it has to be approved, approved.
Yeah, this is just saying that the board can do that and choose sealed bids or whatever you wanna do. And then they give you the list, or whoever does, and of equipment, and you decide, like that old dump truck. Not the green one, not the white one, that red one, that one sitting down there. Is that bad, Frankie?
What's that?
That red truck?
That truck, no. There's a lot of stuff down there that we don't use, and it's just sitting there and wasting, and we need to turn it around and auction it off, get rid of it. That's just like, I got a fire truck sitting in the firehouse that we're not using anymore, and it's just sitting there, and it would be nice to, you know, if we do a sealed, you know, a closed lit area, you know, a sealed bid or anything like that, you know, they can offer what it is, and then we open them here and, you know, the highest bidder is gonna get the truck, and, you know, I mean, a truck that's worth more than two thousand dollars up there, you know, honestly, and it could be utilized for another fire requirement, or light care, or, I mean, whatever, but it's just sitting there and not being used, and it's in our way, and, I mean...
And the longer it sits, and...
Well, and that's the thing, but if it longer sits, plus we're keeping insurance on it, like, sitting in the firehouse, it ain't got enough hose, it ain't got hose on it or anything. So, we're wasting money there.
Right.
But, like, you know, doing the purple wave, you know, you can pretty well, they can set a bid of what you want, and then they can go from there. And basically, all purple wave is, you take pictures, you do the details, you hand to them, they put it online, and, you know, however long the auction wants to go with it, and then whoever's the highest bidder on it gets it, or whatever, however it goes. And that's, that's who St. Jen uses, that's who Perryville uses, so, I mean, it's a good auction company, I mean, so... But like, the old red dump truck down there, you know, it's a nice truck still, it just needs a little TLC, you know, to it, but we got the green one now that can handle heavier weight, like, our one asphalt, more capacity. So, we just need to save one dump truck and start, I think if we start selling some of this off, or, you know, auctioning it off, we can get rid of insurance that's on this ship instead of money, you know? That's just like the old cop cars, you know, they, there's problems with them, you know, a little bit, but you detail the problem, you know, somebody might just wanna move it, but you're gonna pay a lot for it in the auction.
Right, I see. And then, as part of that, ordinances are a thing built into it where we now, you know, list of our inventory and what's gonna be available to the row, or is that just periodic?
Periodic, I mean, it's like in the life cycles, you know? And like he was saying.
And the other thing is, be a good thing, the board members, couple of board members or whoever, you know, should come down there with me and I'll show you what we need to get rid of. You guys write it down on the list, bring it back to the table, I mean, you know?
And that review should be done quarterly or semi-annually.
And, I mean, it, I mean, we got, you know, honestly, we got dog kennels down there, maybe we'll sell them for twenty bucks to somebody or something to get rid of, because we don't keep dogs anymore, there isn't a way down there, so, I mean, it just, it'd be something to look at, you know?
I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be nitpicking, but I would like to make some modifications to the title because, just for clarification purposes, an ordinance to establish for the city of St. Mary's Alderman and the mayor, and authorization to be respected.
We can, we can table this, and then we'll all, we can go through it together, or we go through it, and then we word it. That's fine. Go on the next slide.
I didn't know any of Jenny, I don't know how we're gonna allocate.
It shall be so.
We'll go.
It shall be so.
It shall be so.
It shall be so.
It will be part of my team.
I made a motion to table. I second that motion.
So, I'll send for corrections.
Yeah. Motion made, second, all favor?
Aye.
On any vote, motion to table, so that's me. For this ordinance there. Departmental reports. That one, I just want to get, I have thirty-nine now. So, I mean, that's not on here, so... Departmental reports, commercial management.
Um, what's the, I actually have something to report.
Oh, my goodness.
There we go.
Um, as you all may know, the river is up. As of one o'clock, at the Chester Bridge, it was thirty point eight one feet. It is set to press at thirty-one point six. So, hopefully, we don't get... Well, that's a bunch of big rain, it's everybody up above us, so, we'll be alright, we're gonna be on the lookout and watch for the highways. Go around, go around.
What's the, make a break point, Frankie?
What do you mean?
For the...
So, over Highway sixty-one, the curve's gonna go over thirty-six-one, I think it is.
Yeah.
Anyways, and, I mean, Third Street, you know, from that point, and, and I say this all the time, and that's how it needs to be done. I mean, we've had an officer that was around more often, but when it does do that, I don't mind small vehicle traffic. I mean, we've had an officer that was around more often, but when it does do that, I don't mind small vehicle traffic, but semis, they're going to tear up third street. They've already pulled up new.
Well, we don't allow that anywhere.
Yeah, well, we don't.
Right off the map, whenever that happens, we just need to call the O D, everybody and just tell them.
And the, and the best thing we could do too is, I talked to, well, Lama Dear here, you know, whenever he was over in the state before. The new one now, he is very adamant about working with the towns and stuff with Mo Dot, the supervisor of Mo Dot now. And what we can do, we can actually have them barricade at I H, so they can't come down in here. I mean, it's just local traffic can come through, but not semis or anything like that unless it's delivery. Cause I know there when we had the flood in two thousand eighteen, so I think, you know, they was tearing up a pretty bad, when they were trying to come through there. We don't catch everyone coming through, but when they're hauling, you know, eighty plus, eighty thousand plus pounds, you know, these little roads can't take that, you know, so. Especially third street down there, that's nothing but a spring underneath of it, so. But yeah.
And then can we establish like a group, like a year at thirty five feet or thirty four and a half feet to have a group tax of reasonable.
Yeah, and I mean, we can, you know, April here, there being a emergency man, she, you know, and plus I work, you know, like I did with Dave, I worked with him. I kind of kept him informed, what I knew, he knew, if they need to get material or anything like that, you know, barricade, the sallowage or whatever, you know. She could email that out and text it out, whatever, you know, I mean, it's, it's up to her how she wants to do that and perform that. I know Dave emailed quite a bit out to Alderman, and they were just having, you know, the big flood. And the other thing is, is, you know, with me, cause the other day, I mean, cause we got paid to institute up in St. Jen too. But the other day, you know, I called April and said, hey, what the footage is on that river right now and what it was hitting. They had it set at thirty four or something, but they dropped it back, but then we, we're still looking at rain in the forecast constantly here, so. You know, that's where we start paying attention at, you know, so. The only good thing is, is care up or down care with the Ohio, we're not being done with the Ohio River at this moment, so. If they start getting a lot of rain in the west, or in the east, sorry, we're going to, that's when their Ohio River starts damming Mississippi up and that's when we start really getting the water, so. But yeah, I, I mean, we try to keep everybody informed, uh, the morning, I mean, with the fire department, I keep my guys on their toes when everything like that's happening, you know, cause we have in the past had people go into the water and, you know, drown their vehicle out, they can get out of vehicles, so. But yeah, we keep a, we keep a close eye on them, so. And I mean, I'm, really when you start gritting your teeth is whenever you start closing sixty one all the way up and coming up on third street, that's when we start getting a little acid.
My, my question on that too, that's just my question, are you familiar with Bill number eight and nineteen? Now, you, you should be.
What's what?
Eight nineteen, like, so you have the emergency director, you have him, but we had, Ursula mentioned a coordinator that did it for no monetary gain. So should we have somebody as well? Two, so we can get her trained up too as well on her FEMA, so she can get all the certifications. Cause I mean, she's been working off it, she's got a lot of that, but as well, you know. I think Joey was the prior one, but I don't know what happened with that, that's way more my time. So I don't know what important expenses on that, but they showed right here, I mean, this was in two thousand eight. But they would have to answer to April and the board and everything, help with their money. They don't have any scope and have any law authority other than.
Is that from town or outside of town?
This is from town.
The coordinator.
The coordinator.
The sea board, her day was our.
Yeah, but since, you know, she's still got, you know, the training and everything.
Yeah.
And maybe, you know, like Joey has probably, what, how many certificates do you have, sir?
Forty five, fifty or something.
You know, so that's just something maybe you guys would like to discuss or.
What Dave did, I mean, Dave did all his training, but he just, he worked, he just got paid to work.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I was wondering about that, cause it's, it's like almost a pyramid, like there was somebody under April and the clerk, you know, at the time.
Well, I was going to say, Dave did it and we just all helped.
We did, yeah.
We all chipped in.
I was just wondering because, I mean, he's got certifications, I don't know if he could help her with getting more because of that or.
Yeah, it's better if you got an advance instead of paying the cost or cash home. And everybody scrambling and it's.
I don't have ten, I don't have forty five, so, I mean, and I don't bring a trailer much.
Yeah, I agree, but the other thing people can do too, because Felix Martin is the emergency manager director and that's, she coming back.
Yeah.
If we need anything, you know, and stuff, so, I mean.
Is he still out there, I don't think.
Yeah. Yeah, he was always been like our, really our main.
He's, yeah, he's over whole county, so.
And he, would be, he'd spend a lot of time down here.
Yeah, even there in Carmel, so.
Well, the, the city would work under him.
Yeah.
Also, we got an event, you know, it would be working hand in hand with Felix.
You get it going, if we needed something, he was the one to.
Making it up, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty much managing that, okay. I was wondering about it, is there a big deal, so. I'm listening to that. Police Department.
Uh, so, police officers are commissioned because of a pandemic crisis and I spoke with you right after I was notified about asking the county to pitch in.
And I had to talk, they were down my house earlier, I was talking.
You were asking down here, okay?
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, they don't do too much, you know, they're, they have whole county.
Right. And then in the interim, who do we get for the town spoke, you know, like who they report stuff to?
County can afford city ordinance, but it can be like, if it's a call nine oh one or anything, irrelevant to that.
Okay.
Somebody says, well, this person is, you know, mowed my grass a foot over, I mean, it's a civil matter that way anyways, but I mean, they're not going to come down probably to help with that.
They won't come down to the ordinances, but I mean, if somebody is beating the crap out of somebody, they'll come down for that.
And then I, I have someone stole a tinsaw out of my yard, so, I don't know. And that's really rare, where you have to have something like that happen, so.
And I'm sure you have a serial number, I'm sure.
I should, cause they bought it either at Buckhite or at Ace in St. Jen, so I can trace it back if that's pawn shop.
You would have to get an yield and then what happens, any time a pawn shop owner's in a serial number, it shows up and then they go retrieve it for you. But they, it may be California, who knows where it's at by this point, or maybe at, who knows? Alright, yeah, I just didn't know, and I'm noting this DVR black box system for the car. So that records every traffic stop, everything like that, so it's a liability reasons, you never know what might happen.
Right.
So, but, I mean, do you think we need to have somebody fill in other than counting for these ordinance, cause they're getting out of control?
Uh, that's.
It's a catch point too.
Yeah, it's a tough, because once you do that, then it's, I don't know, there's going to be local tenants or police officers, someone just filling in for a short period of time.
Be a reserve position, you know, so.
I mean, we could look, look into it and see, you know, ask him if he knows someone that wants to cover or you through your connections, I guess.
I just, cause county don't do it like that, it's just more of a policy, they wish they could, I mean, that's what they're coming in on. But I just said no, cause there's no ETA on this.
Okay.
Um, but his time's going to get better, so.
Yeah, of course. So. Uh, I mean medically, a presumption that he's going to be counted up for a while and we won't be covered for a while.
County doing, the county, and county things and, you know, actual crimes, not ordinance or, you know, simple things that can be resolved with, who may be here.
Well, the ordinance is a shit clear up, if we, you had entered a thing here about nuisance officer or something, so.
It's like a hybrid position.
Yeah, I'm, I think that's a better innovation of someone's time to have a police officer around doing.
Yeah, and for money and it's got to say to this to consolidate, like, then it's like, then it's a job that's open or nobody's ever managed to plan it. Frankie can train somebody, you know, so many hours or whatever, and then when they're downtime, he can go around.
Right.
Take picture, write a, you know, whose address and put it in the box and all he got to do is write a four citation on it, so.
Right.
It saved them a lot of money, so leaving them dogs, but I need dogs and cats, you know, that's an issue, it's a, most of cats, but, and dogs, but. But I didn't know what you'd also regard, that's why.
Uh, I think that's, well, to have some substitute fill in might be a good idea, it's going to be a few months.
Cause we've had.
Depends on how well the county's covering for.
They, they try, they try to get down here, but we're the southern part of the county and most time that they're tied up up there in the western part. You have forty five minute, if not sooner, you know, or later, it just depends, I mean. And that's, that's the only problem, Perry County, we don't have an initial agreement with or anything like that, they like anything else, so. So just something to think about. Fire Department?
Huh?
Thirteen.
Oh, alright.
We got it.
Okay. We had a total of seven calls, we had three medic, one mutual wave, one vehicle fire and two fire launch. Everything's been going pretty kosher at fire now. We're, hopefully getting ready to, um, do some ISO inspections, well, we've got to do some testing and stuff for ISO and a couple of rigs and stuff too, so, uh, it's better when they come down, they do our inspection. They, it helps us with our point system, so, we're in the process of trying to get some of that done. The other thing is, is we've tried to push a barbecue, sorry it didn't happen, they unload, it, everything didn't fall through the way we wanted it to fall through. We were planning on, in July here, hopefully, discuss the fall barbecue and put it out there early, a couple, a few months early. So that way maybe we can get everybody, you know, hey, there's barbecue, kind of lifting up over or whatever, so let's, and, you know, try to get something done during that. We did kind of discuss, yeah, the night, with the barbecue not taking place, we were kind of discussing about a fish fry. Kind of, we're kind of, kind of at a standstill with that point, but we're, we're kind of discussing to see what, how it would take or often do, so. We're looking at coming into that right now for maybe summertime here, something, you know. So, that's pretty well it I got with the fire department, so.
Street Department. The streets, I guess the main issue was this railway stuff with the water, water lines and, and Eric, I guess is the only person that's kind of filling in for the.
Kind of, oh, I'll go to the point, you know, when we can.
And then kind of connected to that is, I got the trees planted up on sixty one, both sides of the road and I want to acknowledge Hunter and Charlie. That kid, both of them were, they're like in second and third grade and, you know, they worked with us all day, all day, two days, and they're wonderful. And both of them were like one step ahead of me all the time. I set a line and Charlie was like maybe a foot off of where it measured from, he just has a good eye and I was just watching and remembering myself as a kid and what a loser I was compared to him. Cause he's like boom, boom, next step, next step, so, you know, props to you guys for raising a great kid. And so we got them planted and then I planted a couple of larger sized trees, which are from my initial attempt at it, uh, over on Town Rice Place, but I have no tracks. And I did a couple more of those stick that way and I have a few spots to fill in. And also baiters were amazing too and, and Carlum as well, cause he, they both mowed those areas on the road and let me stick them in and, and they, you know, I watched that they weed even around them, you know, this past week and, and we've got rain and stuff, so it should help the trees set well. And I think they'll take off, you know, too, so I'm proud of that, I'm proud of everybody that's helped to do that, so thank you.
I know somebody at your house is watching out again, picture and everything, so, I didn't know if there's any large traffic going through, there's still, we have the signs, but.
I haven't seen it, I mean, I hauled it, turned our mine up there and I was, I went all the way, I left, made the turn and I still wouldn't, you know, that's just unavoidable, so. Alright.
Yeah, question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
To have your street sign is important and to have your street dress in your house is important. And if the Alderman would go to their prospective wards and say, okay, here's where I take a picture, they're missing one sign or they're missing both or whatever, and there's a house number here, well, we can go to county and they'll, they have the material to make the signs. I don't know if they charge for the material or how it works out, but I know that we had done it in the past. And then people got put houses, numbers in their houses, cause that's a vital life-saving information. Nine one one gets a call, the ambulance tries to find you, we want to make it simple, plain, this is the street name, this is the house number, poof. It's win-win, you know, if you get that down everywhere. And if they can agree to go ahead and do the research and for next meeting, I don't know if it's this month or next month, but, to come with that information, have it on the agenda, so they can go ahead and say, well, we talked to the county, they'll charge us X or they won't charge us whatever. And then these residents, they don't have house numbers, let's just send them a form letter pointing out the importance of having the numbers in their house, so they're visibly seen by ambulance and nine one one and stuff.
Do you have any place specific in mind or?
I am just saying, I've been, I hear some people bellyache about not having a sign or whatever and, I'm just saying that this would, I, I don't know myself personally, but if you go and each Alderman looks in their ward and says, street signs, streets, oops, you know, and take pictures, document it, and who doesn't have house numbers up visibly, I don't know.
Well, according, well, when you do home inspections, it does say that you have to have four inch, the letter, the numbers on of the house number is supposed to be four inches posted on the house. So they should have that.
What's existing right now, we're now having a bunch of people moving in and we want to take care of what we have and.
But I was saying, they, they should have it already, but it still needs to be.
I, I.
They will mention it.
Yeah.
Other places like up in French Village and St. Branson County, like the fire department sold the signs, they got the signs, all the numbers. And they replaced them, but that funds went to the fire department, you know, they would, some nine one one system. Because even on that, you know.
They're sprinkling on the curb?
Yeah, no, and do that, and these are actually reflective signs that show, because after they read it, the nine one one system, even on the computer, it may say, uh, street over here, but over on the island, there's a secondary or something like that, so, and L T M S and fire as well.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, there's a fourth street on, on the island and, and so, and, yeah.
It, yeah, so, alright, did you have something else?
Yeah, um, I had, uh, some people from, or at Circle Drive, asking if we could get a sign to put there, saying no, we're through traffic, because there's people that go through there thinking that they can get that eight stroke and you can't, so I had her get a sign.
Oh, what's a sign? Did you look at it? You're about to.
We're saying they take the day, we pass through.
Yeah, I think.
They never got this up in the mother.
And I got a whole sign for a third on fourth and what is your sign?
Oh, wow.
That's good.
And the others like.
Can you see him, April?
They just saw me, and then the police chase went through there.
It is?
Yeah, and, you know, there's kids, there's a lot of kids up there that play out the road and stuff, so.
And then.
And we try to keep it up.
A lot more kids and I've noticed a lot more flying traffic.
Yep.
If that don't.
Road running. Yeah, they actually have these portable speed pumps now.
Yeah.
And I like them because they work great and they'll figure it out eventually, you know? But we have, there's several generations that come back and like mine had kids, you know, we all have kids now. You've got great kids and everything and we don't need that, so. Sorry, I was thinking out loud, but.
I wish I had a four.
When did those go? When did those go?
Frankie said he's gonna put a lot more.
Oh, great, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, the other thing is working with the kids is I got the, I got the inside info on what's going on in town, including. Running dogs, the dogs aren't used. And those kids are frightened because they're big dogs.
Yeah.
They just come down the hill and, uh, and it's all they want essentially in both Saturday and Sunday and stuff. So that's still an unhandled issue. I even told them to take interest.
I mean, I got all my cameras. I've, I've called Deputy Armit. He can only be so many places and so many times he does Saint John City and everything else. I mean, the laws have changed so much, even from our ordinance when we had it, to store them and retry to rehome them. Now they, you see, A R regulations and temperature regulations is kind of a catch point to there too. Cause then you gotta feed them, there's costs and you gotta insurance and then disposal cost if, you know, if it's somebody or something like that, yeah. It's sad, but I mean.
Our church man said that the, the not, the average claim now on a dog like twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, per terms, yeah. Same with mine, so.
Uh, just somewhere back up. There was a little girl, I can't remember, Kate Flynn, uh, you know, was helping too, uh, a little bit. So I acknowledge her too, cause she was also very helpful.
Another, another thing on street side too is that we need to, you know, try to get something done about it. I mean, there again, you know, I had a guy here with me all day long, one day. And digging out the, where the water leaked from that and to patch them back to asphalt. So we didn't have to add gravel to them all the time. Uh, and plus there in snowplow, you know, that messes with the lake hitting one of them, you know, if we're lighting snow. But, uh.
I would volunteer to do that.
So, you just tell me what that, I mean.
Well, yeah, yeah. But I was gonna say another thing is too is you gotta have been adept too for like, cause there's quite a few spots. Uh, you know, ass chokers or what they would charge, you know, show them the areas or bonus, you know? They can bring their equipment down and, you know, have them done within a day, you know, all of them at once. I mean, I ain't got a problem with doing it. It's just digging them out and going to get the asphalt and coming back with it. And we don't, we don't have a roller right now. I mean, we'd have to hand pack it and a roller would have a lot better, make it smoother than. We're gonna make speed bumps in the roads. I mean, probably don't matter, but it's slow people now, but. Yeah, uh, like, I know like up here on Seventh Street, down on Third Street here, going up Fourth Street. The other one that just got dug up, I thought won't go here, the one right here on Cedar. I mean, there's numerous places that needs to be patched and up and, uh, down at the park, uh, where we put the coal across. Uh, it was asphalt, but it needs to be back asphalt again there.
And so there's estimates on repairs.
Yeah, and we can go around and look at it and you can give them that, you know, wherever located at, they can check. Cause they'll come in and they'll measure, cause they'll go down four inches and they'll measure them in the depth. That way they know how much tons of asphalt they gotta bring in. And then, you know, they got their machines to scoop it out and roll it out and, you know? I mean, I ain't got a problem with doing it, you know, it's just, you know, like Eric just said, you help me out or whatever, you know? But I don't have a problem with doing it. It's just, when you're dealing with asphalt, you gotta have a, you gotta time frame. You gotta get the asphalt on the ground or it's gonna be hard on you and you're done, so.
You're talking roller.
Yeah, and coal patch, not coal, coal patch is good for, it's patching, but it tears up after a while, so, yeah. But coal patch.
Like you said, it's a bag, one bag, fifty pounds and that's about it.
So, I mean, it's better off to, you know, probably do it that way since we got so many. I mean, if there was like one patch, we could do it. But numerous patches got done, cause we didn't have nobody to help do, you know, one guy can't do everything, so. And not me, you, you got a couple of other guys and they don't know what they're doing, things can go sideways really quick, so. But yeah, it'd probably be good to, you know, drop out of bed, do jokers, ask jokers, ask bone men. They're the only two that I know do asphalt and close rocks and anything. I mean, it's a small job, just see what it costs, if it's cost efficient. I mean, if it's over, you know, priced or something you think, then, you know, I ain't got a problem with doing it. Joker's been, Joker's and Bone's have been pretty good with us. They, they, they've done a lot of work down here, so, thank you.
Curious about how many yards do you take total to take our ton?
Oh, right here for all the patches down there. We're looking at probably about a big ton. That's if only you dig.
And each, each material would cost on that, it's labor.
Yeah.
Water, place for our department.
So anyways, y'all know the water leak that the board crew did, like Terry even said. Uh, leak over on Fourth Street over here is fixed and will not leak again. So it can't leak again and shut off.
Yeah.
At the minute, so. I say, and there can't be another leak there, but.
It was good saying, we thought we did, yeah.
But yeah, what it was is Adam was over there helping out too with it, um, and, you know, Kyle, we were trying to. I thought I was gonna have to rip the road up, but we got lucky because I'm, uh, thanks to another company. Um, that, um, they, uh, let us use their locator, uh, to, to trace it out a little better. I got a tone on it and it was right at the side of the road, so we dug it up, we found it, we severed it from the cord, we killed the cord. So that copper can't leak no more, cause it, um, uh, it was actually very oxidized. And that's what the issue is with this newer copper, it's oxidizing, so. But that one is out of place, out of service now. It's not gonna, never be another piece of copper right there in that hole again. Now, the service laying down from that, don't know, but we couldn't find it, so, uh, I couldn't see what it looked like, but, um, but that one's fixed. The other issue is with the water side, uh, we're supposed to have an inspection with B N R. This, the twenty-sixth of this past month, it didn't happen because of all the, uh, catastrophic stuff that was going on with the board crew that in the water line. Uh, I did not wanna try to push an inspection and nothing, and not, there was no hiding anything or anything like that. It was just I couldn't be within because of what was going on, um, trying to flush lines, you know, and taking back T's and, you know, getting everything back to park. And he understood that, so we made, we're gonna make a new date, which, uh, he's supposed to call me tomorrow to let me know, but, um, we're gonna make a new date to have an inspection. Everything, just a normal inspection. He's just checking towers, checking water samples, checking, uh, readings, water loss. I mean, I'm, uh, every, we, we stay on top of that, so it's, uh, we can, uh, you know, inspection should go very low, I mean, for what we have. The other thing is, is, uh, chlorine, uh, injector, uh, it messed up. We was, I seen my number starting to get a little low. Uh, we tore it apart, we cleaned it, uh, the other day. Ordered new ones, so I got the new ones in now, so if something happened, I got a new one I can hurry up and install instead of try to rebuild them. The sewer side, uh, the U V system's fixed now, uh, up and running. But there's an issue with that. Uh, it's gonna cost us a little bit more than what the cost was to replace some bolts and some ballises and stuff. It's all the way back up to a hundred percent, uh, operational. Uh, we, we're not downing the bolts now. But we did find out something and, I mean, it came to the conclusion of why this was blowing ballises and shorting things out. That pit's down below grade level, the creek comes up, it floods it, it gets into the electrical panel. So, um, we're gonna have the electrical panel moved to the top of the steps to keep it out of the water. And the other thing is, is, um, uh, thank God I didn't touch a couple of things in there because I'm still energized, it wasn't supposed to be, I mean, it was, so. We got that issue resolved, so everything's up and running down there, uh, formally. We had our excavator down here, um, that was, um, raining out as well, however you wanna say it, um, very low. Firm wise, whatever cost. So, uh, we had to take some trees out of the sledge thing down there that B N R was, uh, wanting me about. Which I understand happens, but they gotta be, you know, resolved. So that's out of the way. All samples been looking good on everything, uh, so that, that's all I have on that, so.
Um, yeah, I did have a meeting for. Oh, I was saying, I was gonna, about the.
Oh, I don't know if you guys got the paperwork or not, um, from B N R. I don't know if April gave you guys any paperwork. Yes, um, so, had a little. We had our meeting with them, uh, B N R, um, uh, Sonic had it, uh, I don't remember where she is, but. Um, we had, had a meeting with them, uh, and, uh, we had our meeting with the two ladies from, uh, Regional Planning Commission. Seaman Regional Planning Commission, B N, uh, our commissioner. Talking about some grants and stuff, uh, whenever B N R was down here, they were very pleased on, uh, with our inspections. Uh, how everybody's staying in compliance, uh, is, uh, they understand that we are trying to, uh, keep it float. We, they know it's an old system and we're trying to keep it float and we're doing the best we can with it. Very, very, uh, keeping an eye on everything constantly. So, uh, there was a few issues with the system, the clear fire rovers, uh, the blade, the paddles on them. Are starting to get very degraded. Um, they did put new rovers in there. But the paddle system is not what should have been put in there, so they're kinda looking at the clear fire on the skirting on the clear fire itself. It is on the, the clean sheet and needs an update. The sledge holding tanks, you know, uh, we're not really, uh, we're recommending not to hold the sludge as long as we have. And so their recommendation is getting rid of it now and get it out, uh, so that way we're not short-circuiting the system. Which hasn't happened, is, you, we do keep it down to a level, but, um, they would like to see all that disappear. And then, um, uh, you know, uh, it's pretty well did, um, that part of it. But like David was talking about, you know, we do need an update on the clear fire, we do need update on the sewer system. And these grants that they're looking into right now and, uh, trying to help us out with them, uh, is, uh, that's what they're, they're meant, regional planning, that's what they're meant to do. So they're trying to see what we can do and what grants are out there and try to help us out, so. I know Adam here's been talking to Brad a lot more than me about it, cause I ain't got time at work. So, uh, we try and resolve issues and stuff like that. Um, we did, I did get a div from, uh, Randy O'Neil. About hauling slugs, cause there's not very many companies that hauls the slugs out. They will come in and landify it, but we ain't really got nowhere to landify, plus the paperwork. There's a string more paperwork to do, uh, than that. But Randy gave, uh, you know, an estimate of like thirty-six cents a gallon. To haul it out, um, so, uh, that's to clear all three tanks out. So it's gonna be up there in price. I don't remember what we estimated that.
Probably like what we bought out or whatever. That has to be done.
How long is that last, you know, like all three tanks?
All three tanks?
I think how long would that generally last? How long do we begin?
Well, so technically by D N R standards, we are not supposed to pour our slugs no more than two years. So, uh, normally we would always try to haul out every year and that's the thing, if we can get these tanks emptied and annually. Or, you know, once a year on the counter, on a yearly counter, uh, and we have, you know, a tank emptied out. Normally I can hold pretty well all the sludge over into the fifty thousand gallon tank. But with funds, I had to go over to a two thirty thousand gallon tank, so we're looking, you know, I mean, roughly, what was it, a hundred and some thousand, you know? So, um, but Randy said that right now would be the best time to start knocking it out. I don't know if he would take, you know, payments. I don't know if he would wait. I don't know what he would do. I don't, I, I, that part is not my legal area. I'm just the one who reached out. He talks and, you know, discusses with the board and the board discusses him. But he said right now is the best time, so he can haul it and get it out of there, so they can land apply. Because once it, once it leaves my facility, he's the hauler. What he does with it, that's on him, uh, on land applying where he can land apply. And that's where we're trying to keep it at. Um, I know like Metro Ag, I kinda talked to them, uh, to the main guy. And they, they're the ones who does ours up in St. Jan, um, but, uh, them having to have, they're still gonna have to have somebody haul it to them. To land apply in the field that they can land apply. So you're double money there, so. But Randy can do everything. That's the thing about with that. And, you know, with our facility being where we're at and where he's gonna land apply it, we're only within like a fifteen mile radius of where he's going. So, uh, if he's gotta travel any further than that, that's the reason why, cause normally he charges, I think, about forty-seven cents a gallon. But he was trying to keep it down because of so much gallons, so. He did haul for us when we had the mixed river ditch go down on us, uh, and he treated us well with that. Um, he got it done quick. And then he hauled a seed back and I don't even know if he charged us for the seed coming back. I don't know. I think he just hauled, charged us for the haul of getting it out of there first. But the thing about it is, there's, trying to take bio product to another facility is hard to do. Because you're, you're paying a hauler to haul it and then you're gonna have to pay the other facility for them accepting it. We don't, we used to have, like I said, with the Mississippi line, we had an agreement where they took it for free up there and we just charged, we just got charged for the haul. But they can't do that no more, so what they used to do with it.
All the things go together.
Yeah, so EPA kinda stepped in on that, you know, and stuff. And I, and I understand the water pollution and all that early deal. Uh, it's been like that for years here, but, you know, walking through the new century, um, so. But yeah, that's the only one. I know like this grant thing, we was trying to push with and stuff and I think the county commissioner was.
Yeah, I'm so reiterate her quick on that.
Yeah.
I'm sure, cause Mark called me and asked, you know, how we were so happy with Randy and the commissioners. They're checking into it, um, they have passed their legal and everything. So if there's some arco money left on their side, they may be able to pay for this whole thing. So it's a pyramid thing on top of station backs, Barry Barnes had their role or come down and to get these grants, but we can't move forward. To get like an engineering, a newer engineering, you know, grant that pays up the words that we scored and we met the criteria. So after that, it is, it's like a triple effect. And then it goes to the whole committee and they have reserve funds. So if, you know, that plant is that bad, like level, they convert their, you know, clarifier that we have, like same style. Into a bigger oxidation ditch and adds extra clarifiers. They just have to get the sludge and be compliant. And then have the engineering scope and then they did it out and do what they gotta do and they cut the checks. I mean, it's all, there's money out there. It was up to two million dollars. It's just doing a step, you know? And that was the main thing. And so far, so good. I'm still waiting on, you know, the commissioner. But I understand their standpoint, you know? I may need April to give me the, if we got any arco funds, do you know for sure if we did? Cause I was asking about that from Sue. Cause I was asking about that from Sue. Cause if we didn't apply for it, it won't be an issue with Upstate, you know, cause they have that paper trail for any ARCA fund monies when they get on in twenty twenty-six, which I understand. So I provide them everything, you know, to everybody, so. But even if we did get some, as long as we can show where it's allocated from, we're still good. It's just, they have to use that money by end of the year, and so if they're able to help us, and Mark's a, you know, very valuable resource here. And, you know, the commissioners were very, you know, on board with this, so we can get it before some catastrophe happens, like you said, I mean. That, that, I have, just for a second opinion, Barry Barnes came up and, I mean, he found the same findings as Brad, you know, but it's just. It's at the end of life, pretty much bill card, so it's just. So we gotta pretty much go those ways, we missed a deadline on the May, this March first, so. But there's backup money for emergency and like indigent, you know, cities have a medium household income. And how much we're putting out and the scope of work, so. Once you get the engineering and then it starts, it's not gonna be a fast paced thing, but once you get past the red tape. Then it starts flowing, and then they see if it's a big issue, they all convene, they figure out a solution to this, because, I mean, that is, you know the plan, I mean. It's just one of the deals, but so far, I mean, Stacia and Mary West, they call me back, they're working to find this and everything, and. He was in the meeting too, but he's so busy doing his other things, so I'm trying to pick up on that, you know, so that's part of like that's on that. But we did get approved to supply for the engineering, which is the way to do that, and it's up to fifty thousand dollars. And if, um, like anything else changes, we may get more, maybe a hundred percent funded, depending on, and then they go it out to engineers. Use Charlie Ray in the past, so we can't find the blueprints. Cause they, for that, that one, the phases they were gonna do. We can't, nobody seems to know.
So the thing about you with, with the blueprints.
I mean, we paid for it, but he should have a copy of that.
You give him a dollar? I'm pretty sure he does.
That way they could go in and they can kinda base that, because I believe you're with that.
The.
The, uh, twenty twenty.
Was it the grabby fed?
Yeah, the grabby fed.
It was around that area, it was right before, it was right under, uh, that.
So.
Yeah, yeah, it's about five years ago.
So they'll need a new one, but this grant, yeah, cause they can only go two years.
But regional planning, what they would plan to do, regional planning's got money too, they, they can get, they can get great monies out there that pays a hundred percent. On, you know, on the dollar, um, uh. Um, the thing about it is, is with the blueprint, I'm just trying to find, even if I found the blueprint of that, um, uh, things is when we was talking about putting the big lift station down here, and going grabby fed, and. Uh, you know, we'd have to have some grinders in certain areas or whatever, even that, and then the other thing is, is, um, uh, you know, that's what we're trying to look for, is to. Better away from the grinder system, chop, you know, if we can do it that way. Um, but even if there's that blueprint, and even like, um, uh, they said, Margaret and them said there, that it's better to get the blueprint, uh, to be advised. Because the cost, you know, uh, so it might cost, you know, say one point some million dollars beforehand, now it might be three million dollars, so. Whenever the, they get the blueprints to reprice the, what, what it's gonna cost, that way, whenever you get it to them, they know what money they're having to look at, so. So, that's the other, that's really why I had one, the blueprints on that part, so. But what me and April found was not the phase part of what we was looking for, I don't know.
They don't have one.
It wasn't the right. So, I know, I know it was every one, because I was in the meeting on that, so, but I don't know. But they should have them up there for engineering friends.
I'll call Charlie later.
Yeah, that's what we're asking, waiting on that, so. All right, park cemetery in Amityville.
I had a meeting with Mayor Beckett, and we discussed the park issues and the possible relocation, and. We decided that we do a cost analysis comparing what it would cost to fix up and secure the current location versus relocating. So we'll be working on that for the park.
So a lot of places and another foot plan. I don't see no, and then actually the antique mall property has been purchased.
Oh, by whom?
Uh, it would be, uh, Mr. Fisher, that's part of the terms and agreements, I called Gigi last time. But it has not been transferred over to him yet, it's still up there under Crown, you know. And I didn't know that. Yeah, so, Mr. Fisher, I guess owns that property, he was supposed to develop it, indeed has not been transferred over at that point.
So, but any idea of how?
He, she did have a scope, he, that's what she told him, you know, or he told her, and. So, I mean, that was pretty much it on that, cause, you know, I asked her, if she works for us or the property manager, I mean. So, that was the scope of work he did, tearing it down, and then he bought it, and then, I, it's under another company name, I guess, so maybe it's for sale, I don't know yet, so. Cause there's so many, Bobby has different companies, so, yeah, so that was kind of take her there, which I wasn't expecting, so, but they did it anymore.
As far as the cemetery, I went through the cemetery, and I stopped taking pictures of damaged monuments after about twenty-five. I mean, it is bad, and sad.
It is, that's.
In the old section.
Some of it is natural, so that's not, because, I mean, mistakes in the middle for the tiers, they lift them up and throw it over. I mean, I, I don't see any backing pressure that strong, being able to do that, and so. I counted around, I mutated twenty-five, I counted about fifty.
Yeah, I was, yeah, it was pretty bad, so I'm gonna talk to some local restoration groups around and see if I can get some information on what may be able to be accomplished. To try to fix that.
Is there a trustee over that, Catholic side and everything now?
We don't touch the Catholic side.
I know, but where we are, some of them, that's where we're mostly, the Catholic side's gonna be fine.
The Catholic side don't have the old, old.
No, yeah, but even some of the new ones up there have been knocked over too. So, I don't know how that, it's not from natural currents erosion undermining, these are just things.
It's vandalism, you know.
Somebody kicked it over, you know, and it broke away from the mortar, so, that's why I was wondering. And I told her, you know, it's not, it doesn't hurt to reach out, but St. Jen does it all the time, and their cemetery restoration. But I don't know how they do it, I haven't talked to Happy Welsh, so.
I don't know, the city actually, that's, that cemetery that they always do. Kind of Restoration Society, I think, handles a lot of that, but I'll find out, I'll, you know, I'll talk to them, yeah, cause I don't think the city has anything, you know.
No, no, but I mean, if, if that committee or, and they're covered under insurance and stuff like that, they probably know all the chemicals, their special chemicals.
Oh, yeah, I know that, I already know, I was gonna say, Brenda's already, she went to that.
And I was like, wow, I'm surprised.
They said he'd come and talk to us about too, of cleaning and everything else, but I think the main thing we have to do is figure out how we can repair a lot of that, if that's at all possible, something we can do.
Yeah.
Um, you know where Miles Gilbert is located? The fence walk you to it looks great, but then you look on the other side, they didn't paint the other side of the fence. But there was a time where there was two branches blowing in the wind, rocking the cross on top, and I'm afraid it's gonna fall. Uh, but it was Clyde Bergerhoff, got some little saw thing way up on a pole that we got that, just branches down, took them away and got rid of them, but. That's, you know, the founder of St. Mary's, Miles Gilbert, and.
I know, I mean, it's a historical cemetery, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's got the fence around his property, I know it's only painted on one side, but that needs to be. Eyeballed, I know I wanted to do things, I, I was told, only the people that have say over that plot can do things, you can't do anything. And you can't find their people, because everybody's dead, so I don't know how it works out with the. Like, and I'll say, Jen has a memorial cemetery, and they do a great job with it.
Yeah, and next, I'm gonna try to see if I can get some information.
It doesn't hurt for you.
Have something by next month, exactly.
Yeah.
Animal control, little dogs again, do we all own those dogs?
Would you push one of their.
The ones that are running around over there?
There are other, I mean, if you ask, he asked one, they'll tell you, because he's the one that's having a deal, he came over and visited me, and he asked me for. A stick or a club to carry with him when he might owe the commission to his parents to do stuff over at my place. So, uh, so the kids are, they're a little terrorized by it, by, and, and they, you know, they're little. So they don't know what's a safe dog, what's a not safe dog, to them, it's a dog that looks like a pit bull or a bulldog or whatever, and they have a white head and an incredible, you know, jaw crushing force or whatever, so. Uh, and there's, you know, in the media, there are plenty of examples of dogs that, okay, that, you know, fur, you know, uh. As a kid, it's almost the same size, it's a, almost like a physical challenge to them, no matter how sweet the dog was or whatever. So it just has to be ringing in, you know, a little bit more, and over by me at Forest Street, I've seen him. Uh, you know, come visit me a lot of times, it'd be nice to, you know. Monster Buster does. Yeah, so, and they, and I stopped taking pictures a while, a while back, you know, too, because I know a dog, and I have dogs, it doesn't bug me, but. But the kids do, and it's right down the highway, and that's actually, uh, a motorist stopped that was passing through town, and said, he was worried about any of the dogs up and around.
Some bicycle also too, it's the, yeah.
So, that, uh, that's an ongoing issue, uh, we've sent letters to the owners of the, for, and we're sending one, yeah. We really got better from the owners back to the shareholders, which with them, maybe fourth and Civil.
Yeah.
Which is a news thing soon away, so, all right.
That's all I have.
Citizens participation, anybody wanna speak?
I asked my reiterate, where I already said that.
Yes.
It's vital, important, lifesaving information to get those addresses that don't have signs on the street or numbers on their house, and. Everybody go there, you know, you got two aldermen in each ward, they can go out, sweep it, take pictures of whatever, and then. Bring it to the next meeting, was it gonna be this month or next month?
Next month, probably.
Okay, then, bring it to that meeting and already talk to the county about the cost, if any, to, for the signs, and. Send a letter to the people that don't have the numbers displayed in their house. And it'd be nice to have it done the next meeting, that's all.
Thanks, Frank, we'll look into it. All right, motion to adjourn and do in the possession.
I'm trying to make a motion to adjourn, that's me.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
All vote, motion vote.